Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Lamatina.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Here.
Counselor McCarthy.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancy.
Yes.
And Counselor Zachem.
Here.
Have a quorum.
Thank you. I'm informed by the clerk that a quorum is in attendance. At this time, I now have the pleasure of introducing the guest of Counselor Charles Yancy. It is Bishop Bernard Bragg, who is the senior pastor of the New Life Restoration Temple in Boston, who will deliver invocation. I'd ask that council members all present at the appropriate time to please rise. I'd like to give Counselor Yancy an opportunity to introduce Bishop Bernard Bragg. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It is indeed an honor to present to our colleagues Bishop Bernard N. Bragg, the presiding prelate of the Bethel Churches of Christ Incorporated. As the President mentioned, he currently serves as the senior pastor of the New Life Restoration Temple in Boston, more specifically, Codman Square in Dorchester on Center Street. He will be celebrating his 30th wedding anniversary this year to former Beverly Williams. He's been a teacher and administrator in the Baltimore Public School System. He was ordained in ministry in October 18th of 1986. He serves on numerous community organizations, the boards of directors, and he's been providing spiritual leadership to residents of the city of Boston and greater Boston for many, many years. He's been featured in Who's Who among American pastors. He's a recipient of two honorary doctorates degrees. He currently serves as the CEO of the New Life Community Development Corporation and the Bernard N. Bragg Ministries. I could go on for another half hour, but I would wear up my welcome within these chambers. So without any further ado, I'd like to present Bishop Bernard N. Bragg and ask that all counselors and guests please rise at this time.
And now, God, we come to you, first to recognize that you are God and beside you there is none other. We exalt and we lift you because your name is great and your name is greatly to be praised. We thank you, God, for mercy and compassion that can only come from you. You have declared that all good and perfect gifts comes from you. And so, God, we acknowledge first and foremost that without you, we are a failing and a wanting people. But because of you, we have life, and that life even more abundant. And because we have abundant life, life exists, God, in the attitude and in the behavior that we are to do good to them. We are to bless and we are to raise up and we are to keep and we are to safeguard. And, God, we come specifically today to pray, God, for this council who fight and war and struggle and converse and come to agreement of how to settle and solve ills of our society. There's so many things that goes awry, so many things, God, in the life of people that are needed. And we thank you, God, that you have chosen these, selected these. We understand, God, the council of vote. We understand that we have to put things through election. But I believe, God, that beyond people pushing buttons and writing notes declaring who they want, I believe that the sovereignty of God has orchestrated in this season, in this time, these who now co-mingle, these who have now gathered themselves together for one purpose, and that is to raise and to discuss and to find means and ways that will help provide, God, for people. Your word has taught us, according to the last words of David when he declared unto his son Solomon, that he who ruleth over men must be just, ruling in the fear of God. I pray, God, that the justice of these who stand before us, the justice of these who work weekly and daily, that, God, you would give them the wisdom and the knowledge, God, to rule well, to sovereignly bring to part, to sovereignly, God, bring to pass the things, God, of the desire of this great metropolitan. We thank you, God, because your word has also taught us that if any man lack wisdom, let him ask of God. We cannot rule well. We don't know enough. We're not smart enough. We don't have that much education to come up with everything that God's society needs. But because you know all things, because you are omniscient, because you are immutable, because you are omnipresent, you know before we get there. And so, we ask you, God, to kiss us with your presence. Allow us, God, to have a mindset that will hear the hearts of people, that as we set and co-orchestrate, that as we build to work a community that is good for all people, that goes beyond nationalities, that goes beyond race, that goes beyond religion, that tear down boundaries and borders, we pray that you will make us one in you. For truly, your number is one. Your number is birthed in unity. Has nothing to do with how many people we have. Our strength is not in numbers. Our strength is in unity. And so, God, I pray that you will unify this council. I pray, God, that you will remember this great president. I pray that you will guard over him as he give wise instruction, as he leads well. I pray that you will cause those who follow to take the attitude that Paul had. I will follow you as you follow. God, I pray that you will continue to remember the council members, not only in the work that they do here in the Council for Cities, but, God, it must be strenuous, it must be straining to have to deal with the affairs of men and then deal with your own personal affairs. And so, I pray, God, for them personally. I pray for their homes and their families. I pray that you will secure them and, God, that you will enable them to ever take great delight that when I have done the last here and when time comes for transition and shift, let them, God, be pleased to know that they've helped somebody and because they've helped somebody, cause their living not to be in vain. So once again, God, I ask you that you will guard them, govern them, keep them, protect them, give them the desires of their heart, cause them to be good people, well people, encourage people, strengthen them, God, to look beyond, God, the politics of political action and do what is right for the sake of community and what is right for the sake of people. I pray for them once again. Have your way in their lives. Settle us. Hold us close to you. We'll never forget, God, that the grace of who we are has come from you, and we will never steal glory from you, and neither shall we ever share it with another. But we'll be careful always to declare to men and women, look at what the Lord has done. So bless us now, and we'll remember to give your name all praise always. We ask this in your great name and for your name's sake, and the people here say amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Bishop Bernard Bragg, for your moving and inspiring message. At this time, I would like to ask Counselor Charles Yancy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our guest will be escorted outside the chamber. At this time, we'll do approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes stand approved, hearing no objections. The minutes stand approved. Regular order of business. I'd like to call Madam Clerk, out of order, docket 0262.
Docket number 0262, Counselor Linehan offered the following order, that the rules for the Boston City Council be adopted for the municipal years 2014 and 2015.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We've held a number of meetings regarding individuals' input into the content of our committees to help create stronger committees and to reinforce each and every one of them. My goal as part of this process was to create a real sense of specificity, reciprocity, and empowering each and every one of you as chair in these rules. I appreciate all the input that you all gave me as part of this exercise, and I'd like to say that the rules virtually have not changed other than Rule Number 24. And you may want to look at Rule Number 24. The rules as presented here in this docket extend the opportunity for a minority of the council to move a matter over the objection of a chair in any committee, but the change is that it would be after 120 days and with five members agreeing to do that. That is really the only other matter is that in the past, it was for a municipal year, and this is for municipal years 2014 through 2015. So if anybody has any comments or any questions for the chair on that matter, I'd be glad to entertain them. Counselor Yancy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I'll be very brief. Once again, congratulations, Mr. President. I know a lot of thought went into changing these rules. I just have a couple of comments. I think the intent of Rule 24 is to strengthen the authority of committee chairs. It does extend the amount of time necessary to pull a docket out, but I also think that when you do that, you sacrifice the ability of our colleagues who may have concern that issues receive greater attention on a more urgent basis will be inhibited somewhat by your proposed changes. So that's comment number one. Comment number two has to do with the term that these rules will be into effect. I don't believe we have the authority to enact rules beyond the current calendar year unless there's an ordinance that gives us that authority. So those are my only two comments, and certainly I suspect that many of our colleagues will have some comments as well. I actually prefer the Rule 24 that was enacted last year in terms of the ability of colleagues to bring things to a vote a little earlier than what you're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yancy. Just to comment on that, I did make sure that the rules allowed for a minority group to have the opportunity to bring a matter forward. I just think that 120 days is not that long considering the empowerment of each and every one of you with a significant committee and chair responsibility. So that matter will stand. I looked into the matter related to Rule 40A, and in particular, the charter says that we will develop rules from time to time. It doesn't specifically say that it will be done on an annual basis and that we've accepted the rule in the past to have a two-year term, and these rules will also continue that process. Then the rules make sense to follow in that regard along with the committee assignments. In doing so, I've created, as you all well know, there's three separate special committees that will allow us to concentrate in specific areas of governance, transportation, and the development of small business. And these special committees will be able to do thorough due diligence on matters related to those areas of concern and be able to accept many orders that I do feel that will come from you all these next two years. So I think that this format will work very well for all of us, fortify us, and I thank each of you for whatever input you gave me on a particular committee matters. I don't see... Counselor Jackson.
One, again, congratulations on your presidency, Mr. President. I think this is a rule... Well, actually, I just think that we should expedite whatever is in our committees. I also think, though, that it also means that people have to work together to have conversations, to push forward in terms of expediting that. I do prefer the prior setup based on that. I think we want to continue to expedite the business of the council. And we also have the opportunity, as each individual counselor, whether you're a chair or not, to vote up or down on any of the things that lay before the council. So that's my opinion on this. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Jackson and Counselor Yancy, for your comments. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise in regard to Rule 24. Just out of clarity, I believe that the prior year's rules read, "After 90 days after matters referred to a committee, unless referred under Rule 5, it may be called by three members of the council." And this would change it to, "After 90 days, seven members of the council," and then it adds an additional clause for 120 days, five members. Listen, I understand we need to strike the right balance of making sure that we have an empowered committee chairmanship while also allowing all of us as duly elected members to have an opportunity to weigh in. As my good friend from District 7 mentioned, we all have a vote, one way or the other. And I think the matrix, for lack of a better word, or the rules that were set up under Council President Murphy, which allowed for that, I think, was a fair compromise, and I would certainly support that and urge you to reconsider the days and the number of counselors with these new rules. Thank you.
All right, at this time, the chair moves for suspension and adoption of docket number 0262. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docket 0262 has been adopted. Clerk, communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Docket number 0240, message and order approving a home rule petition to the General Court entitled, "An Act Amending the Preparation of Certain Bilingual Ballots in the City of Boston."
Docket number 0240 will be placed in government operation.
Mr. President, I'll read the next.
Please do.
Docket number 0241, message and order amending an appropriation order that would raise the amount from $29,085,000 to $34,759,000 for the purpose of closing out a landfill area, opening a new landfill area, making improvements to an existing landfill area, and/or the construction of a municipal outdoor recreational athletic facilities, including the acquisition and development of land and the construction and reconstruction of facilities for the purpose of the city departments, including the Parks and Recreation and Public Works Department, filed in the Office of the Clerk on January 24th, 2014. Docket number 0242, message and order authorizing Mayor of Boston on behalf of the city to file applications and execute agreements for grants and/or loan assistance with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection and the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Pollution Abatement Trust pursuant to Chapter 21 and Chapter 29(c) of general laws of the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Matters 0241 and 0242 are matters that both do warrant attention from Ways and Means and Environment and Parks. I will assign them jointly to Ways and Means and Environment and Parks.
Docket number 0243, message and order authorizing the Fire Commissioner to accept a gift of hydraulic tools from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation.
I'd like to offer that we suspend and pass 0243. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. 0243 has been passed.
And I'll read the next.
Please, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0244, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Dr. Maia Minter-Jordan as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission for term expiring January 15th, 2016. Docket number 0245, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Manny Lopes as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission for a term expiring January 17th,
Matters 0244 and 0245 will be placed in the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Mr. President, would you like to...
Yeah, please, Madam Clerk, if you would.
Docket number 0246, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of Daniel Arri Coe as Mayor's Office Chief of Staff effective January 17th, 2014. Docket number 0247, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of Evan Garza to the Boston Art Commission for a term expiring February 1st, 2019. Docket number 0248, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment designating John T. Tagliatella as a member of the Board of Review effective January 24th, 2014. Docket number 0249, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment designating Constance Holmes as Chair of the Board of Review effective January 24th, 2014. Docket number 0250, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of Vanessa Weathers as a member of the Board of Review effective January 24th, 2014. Docket number 0251, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of Michael D. Dennehy as a member of the Freedom Trail Commission, term expiring January 1st, 2015. Docket number 0252, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of Megan Costello as a Director of the Women's Commission effective January 13th, 2014. Docket number 0253, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing by the Boston Residency Compliance Commission regarding the annual report of 2010/2011. Docket number 0254, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing by the Boston Residency Compliance Commission regarding the annual report of 2011 through 2012. Docket number 0255, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the Report and Decision on the Landmark Center, Chapter 121a Project.
Madam Clerk, matters 0246 through 0255 will be placed on file. Motion, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0256, Counsel Pressley and Jackson offered the following order for hearing to discuss Boston's entrepreneurial economy and startups as engines for economic growth and innovation.
Counsel Pressley.
All refiles. We had a very busy legislative season, but there are some hearings that just simply ran out of time and was unable to host those hearings. And so, these are refiles, they're self-explanatory. I would invite the cosponsorship of anyone who would like to sign on. Madam Clerk, I do also have a late file. I was not looking to speak on the other matters. I was wondering if it could be taken out of order and I could speak on that, or I can wait. That's fine.
We can.
Okay, that's okay.
It doesn't have a docket number.
I see. Okay, very good. All right, so I am refiling docket number 0256, 0257.
Counsel Pressley, we just read 0256. I would like to have the clerk read the remainder of yours.
Okay, absolutely.
And then you could get up and speak on all...
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Not enough for too much coffee. I'm rusty. Save me, Madam Clerk. Save me. Okay, very good.
Mr. President, sorry, Counselor.
So if you would read the remainder, 0257 through 0259, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. 0257, Counsel Pressley offered the following order for hearing regarding utilizing coin meters to support homelessness prevention. Docket number 0258, Counsel Pressley... Docket number 0258, Consul Presley offered the following order for hearing to examine Boston Police Department policies on license plate scanners and ensure individual privacy rights are protected. Docket number 0259, Consul Presley offered the following order for hearing to discuss the impact of access to childcare on our workforce and the economy. Would you like me also to take this?
Consul Presley, you may rise to speak on 0256 through 0259.
All right.
Thank you.
Again, I'm just refiling. They're self-explanatory. I welcome your participation in the hearing and your cosponsorship today if you would like to sign on to any of these items. I will be speaking only on one docket today, and that is a late file, which I very rarely do, and I thank you for your indulgence in advance. Thank you.
Thank you. Consul Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to ask to have my name added to 0... Actually, it's already on 0256. I just wanted to note that the entrepreneurial economy is something that we need to not only look at downtown, but we need to look at in every single neighborhood in the city of Boston. And also, shameless plug, next week on February 5, I will be hosting the first of many access-to-capital workshops in Roxbury to not only open the doors of opportunity, as I noted, downtown, but to every single neighborhood in the city. This issue of the innovation economy is one that can really help lift neighborhoods and communities out of the difficult economic downturns that they've had. And I look forward to working with Consul Presley and others on that. Thank you.
Could you add Consul Jackson's name to that, Madam Clerk?
He's already.
Oh, he's a cosponsor. Okay, I'm sorry. Consul Flaherty?
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Clerk, please add my name to docket 0257. Did something very similar to this back in 2009, and unfortunately, it was poo-pooed by the prior administration. I'm not sure if they didn't think we had a homeless crisis or because they weren't going to be able to put their names on the meter. But I think it's a great way to raise serious revenue, eliminate some of the panhandling that we see in a lot of the intersections, which are very hazardous to both motorists and pedestrians. But, you know, obviously, 100% of money is raised through these meters, which would be, would obviously enjoy corporate sponsorship with, would go to direct services, whether it's shelters or educational opportunities, job creation, substance abuse, mental health. So, very worthwhile initiative. They're having tremendous success with this issue out in Denver. Happy to add my name and look forward and hope that our new administration will embrace this as a way to help combat the homeless epidemic that we experience here in our city. So, thank you.
Please add Consul Flaherty's name. Consul Yancey?
And the maker of these four orders, I would like to have my name added to docket numbers 0256 and 0259.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, you got that? Thank you. Consul O'Malley? Thank you, Consul O'Malley. Do you have that, Clerk? Thank you. Consul Murphy?
0257 and 0258. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul Murphy. Counsel, matter 0256 will be placed in the Committee on Economic Development and Labor. Matter 0257 will be placed in Healthy Women, Families, and Communities. 0258 will be placed in Public Safety. And 0259 will be placed in Healthy Women, Family, and Communities. If you could read matter 0260?
Docket number 0260, Consul Murphy offered the following resolution urging the Weather Channel and DirecTV to continue contract negotiation.
Consul Murphy, you have the floor.
...to DirecTV. They're not part of the cable service, and there are several thousand of them in Boston. There are over 100 million subscribers to the Weather Channel nationwide. And the Weather Channel is the premier source for weather, for getting information on the weather. They performed admirably on Hurricane Katrina, on Superstorm Sandy, on no-name storms and blizzards here. And because of a dispute over carrier fees between the Weather Channel and DirecTV, DirecTV is no longer carrying the Weather Channel. And this resolution simply asks them to go back and continue having discussions so that DirecTV customers in Boston, among other places, would have access to the premier weather forecasting technology in the country. So I'm asking for suspension of the rules and passage and sending this off to DirecTV and the Weather Channel. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Consul Murphy has requested suspension and adoption of the resolution urging the Weather Channel and DirecTV to continue contract negotiations. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Matter 0260 has passed.
Docket number 0261, Consul O'Malley offered the following order for hearing to discuss ways to reduce litter and promote recycling in the city of Boston.
Consul O'Malley, you have the floor.
And Madam Clerk. You know, I've long said we have the best job in the world because we focus on the small quality of life issues, those constituent service issues, as well as the larger towing or trash pickup. We have similar calls on ways that we can strengthen the state of Boston Public Schools or bring new businesses, work on public safety initiatives. And the order that I bring before this body today is more of a constituent service issue, but it really has these wide-ranging ramifications. And I'm talking about litter, particularly in our local business districts. We all have Main Streets or different business and professional associations, and we see how litter and garbage and things that are strewn about when the barrels aren't picked up can really adversely affect not only the local economy, the local business district, but public safety, public health, and really the whole quality of life. We've done some innovative things in this city. You know, I think one thing the previous administration did well is working to bring the Big Belly solar trash compactors. We see them around here. Some of them are able to take recycling, others are not, particularly those in our local business districts. So we need to look at some new innovative technology that is out there. We also need to employ some tried-and-true methods. I've been in other cities. I know you have as well, and we've seen what people are doing in many European cities. They have the binless bins, which is basically a frame that has a bag, and it's very inexpensive, it's very clean, it's very unobtrusive. We see that in some of the MBTA stations as well. These are things that we should be thinking about employing in our local business districts and in our neighborhoods particularly. We also need to do more in terms of how we go after these chronic litterers, these people that really make these unsafe and unsightly areas to work in. We, it just is a point of sort of, I guess, comparison. New York City offers fines of $1 to $300 for chronic littering or for a variety of offenses. St. Louis, $100 to $500. Chicago, $200 to $1,500. In Boston, it's $25, no matter the number of the offense. We have to have a conversation about increasing that. And that's money that can go directly into some ways that we can make these business districts better. Also, look at this new technology, these Big Bellies, and perhaps some have advertising revenue streams, others don't. That could be a way. And that's a way that we could pay for the wildly successful Hokie program that's in many business districts just for certain parts of the year, usually the summer and into the early fall. Some are year-round, but many are not. But these are ways that we can do. So I look forward to having a robust hearing with our local Main Streets district, with our civic associations, with our neighbors, with all of you. It's time that we look at new technology that's out there, new apparatus that we can use, some tried-and-true methods that are working well, and really figure ways that we can make Boston, and particularly our neighbors, our business districts, clean and safe. It's about quality of life, and it's about so many other issues. So, thank you for this opportunity. Look forward to a quick hearing and invite you all to join me in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Consul McCarthy?
6-1, simply put, the Big Belly units are near and dear to my heart as I used to manage the program. As Consul O'Malley alluded to, the units that have advertising on them, those were not paid by taxpayers. Those were paid by a second party, actually a third party. And we're also getting revenue. As Consul O'Malley also spoke of, the Big Bellies, those units are Wi-Fi. So we're not only saving money with the recyclables and the trash, but we're also saving money with CO2, reducing CO2 emissions, fuel costs, and more importantly, with the small manpower that we have in Public Works Department, the actual manpower of the Boston Public Works Department. I always tell the story that after we put the additional Big Belly units on the street, after the first couple months, we collected enough recyclables to fill the New England Aquarium fish tank. So if you could picture that tank with Gatorade bottles and water bottles, you understand the true impact we're making in the city of Boston. Littering is a problem, and I cannot wait to work with Consul O'Malley on this.
Is it appropriate tradition to give a standing ovation to someone when they do their first speech? It took me three months to make my first speech because I wanted to make sure I knew what I was talking about. And congratulations, Consul McCarthy. Consul Lamatina, the floor is yours.
I just want to commend the maker of this order. And I'm so happy that our new Consul McCarthy is on board, who has a lot of experience in Public Works. Whatever we could do to really clean up our city and our neighborhoods, we all should work together on that, particularly in the business districts. This is an issue I've been working on since day one, trying to clean up the neighborhoods. Sorry. I really think that business owners need to take some responsibilities. You know, if you go to Europe, and we talk about Europe, the business owners over there, they clean in front of their storefronts every single morning before business starts. And that's something that we should look over here. And the Hokies, they do a great job. But know something, they shouldn't be cleaning business districts. The business owners should be helping in front of their storefronts so we can put the Hokies in the neighborhoods where they really need some help. So I commend the maker and ask that my name be on this.
Consul McCarthy, you want your name added? And anybody else? Consul Baker, Consul Seomo, Consul Flaherty, Consul Jackson, Consul Murphy, Consul Wu, Consul Presley, Consul Yancey, and Consul Zakim. Excuse me? And I wish to sign on. Thank you. How's that? Matter 0263 will be placed in the Committee on Neighborhood Services. Please continue, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0264, Consul Lamatina offered the following order for hearing regarding flood zone maps and insurance rates.
Just for correction, that's 0261 is the last one we spoke on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
0261 was his last.
Oh, I'm sorry. I read the wrong... Did I read the wrong number?
No, it's all right.
Everything's fine.
Everything's fine.
Thank you.
So, we're going to read you.
I'm sorry.
Docket number...
0264.
6-3.
Okay. No, we just did that.
No, 6-1.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's the problem.
Great minds think alike. Docket 0263, Consul Lamatina offered the following order for hearing to examine the impact that trash placement and collection services has on the city of Boston.
Thank you.
Consul Lamatina, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a refile. Last November, I filed an order for a hearing. I received a petition from now's over 800 residents in regards to looking at how we put out our trash. And presently, in some of the downtown neighborhoods, there's trash put out two in three days. And you're allowed to put your trash out at 5:00 at nighttime, pick up at 7:00, which is, you know, 14 hours of trash, your trash out in the street. In the meantime, the 14 hours, we have people littering, going through the bags, ripping the bags open, rodents looking for food. And I really believe that we should look at putting out our trash between 6:00 in the morning and pick up at 9:00, after 9:00, which is less hours on the streets. I'm looking to talk to the mayor and the new Public Works Commissioner and try to do a pilot program somewhere in downtown Boston, hopefully in the North End, so we can see if it makes a big difference in the cleanliness of our neighborhoods. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Consul Lamatina. The Chair would like to add his name to that matter, if I could. Consul McCarthy? Consul Zakim? Consul O'Malley? Consul Wu? Consul Jackson? Yeah, Jackson. Consul Presley? Sorry. Consul Baker? Seomo? Consul Seomo, Consul Flaherty? Consul Jackson? Consul Murphy? Did I get everybody? Great. Thank you. This time, matter 0263 will be placed on the Committee on Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs.
Docket number 02...
Madam Clerk, just for clarification. So, matter 0261. Did it end up in Environment and Park? Okay. I did say that. Okay, I'm just for clarification. I didn't, right? No, I did. So, yeah. So, the matter, if there's no objection, I'd like to see that matter 0261 be placed in Environment and Parks.
Thank you.
Any objection? Then the matter's so replaced in committee. Thank you. Sorry, Consul O'Malley on that.
Docket number 0264, Consul Lamatina offered the following order for hearing regarding flood zone maps and insurance rates.
Consul Lamatina?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is also a refile. As you know, FEMA has just recently come out with some new maps and what's really impacts a lot of downtown neighborhoods, Dorchester, South East Childstown, East Boston. And I really think that we need to really be a top of this issue, particularly in those neighborhoods where homeowners will see thousands and thousands of dollars increases in their insurance rates. So we really need to pay attention to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Consul Flaherty wants to add his name. Consul Baker would like to add his name. Consul Yancey, Consul Murphy would like to add their names. All right. Personnel orders. Excuse me. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Getting like my predecessor. I'm trying to move this along too quickly.
Big President.
I'd like to refer matter 0264 to the Committee on Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. Stay on me, clerks, please. Personnel orders.
Docket number 0265, Consul Lenihan for Consul O'Malley offered the following order for the appointment.
Yep. Consul O'Malley moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0265. All those in favor, say?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it.
And the order has passed.
On docket 0265.
Order has passed. Docket number 0266, Consul Lenihan for Consul McCarthy offered the following order for the appointment of the temporarily...
Consul McCarthy moves suspension and passage of docket 0266. All those in favor, say aye? All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and docket 0266 has been passed.
Docket number 0267, Consul Lenihan for Consul Zakim offered the following order for the appointment.
Consul Zakim moves for suspension and passage of docket 0267. All those in favor, say aye? All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The ayes have it. Matter 0267 is passed. At this time. Late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there are, are there one late file? Just a quick recess. I thought you were going to keep an eye on him, Councilor O'Malley. Late files, Councilor Wu.
Yep, just wanted to move for reconsideration on docket number 0256, to ask that we consider moving it to the Special Committee on Small Business, Entrepreneurship, and Innovation.
Councilor Lamatina, you have no problems with that? All right, then, at this, Councilor Yancey, your button's pressed, is that? Oh, for the next matter in the late file? Oh, okay. So what is that matter, and then we'll handle that? Oh, I'm sorry. So, yeah, we're going to move, we are moving a reconsideration of docket number 0256 to be moved from the Committee on Economic Development to the Committee on Small Business and, I don't, is the title, the full title?
The Special Committee.
Special Committee on Small Business and Entrepreneurship. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The matter's moved. Councilor Yancey, sorry that I missed the buzz.
Look, this no matter requiring my attention at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm informed by the clerk that there are one late, there is one late file matter, which in absence of objection will be added to the agenda. Hearing no objection, the matter are added to the agenda. The clerk will read the first late file matter. First and last, the only one.
Offered by City Councilor Ayanna Presley, an order for hearing to discuss the need for comprehensive trauma response system in the city of Boston. Whereas trauma is known to manifest in the immediate aftermath and in the days, weeks, and months following a traumatic incident, therefore is ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council hold a hearing to discuss the need and funding for a comprehensive trauma response system in the city of Boston, and that members of the Boston Public Health Commission, Boston Police Department, Boston Public Schools, and other interested parties be invited to testify.
Council Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a late file. I thank you for accommodating it. This late file is also a refile, and I am renewing my commitment that we see strategic and formidable investment in a trauma-team coordinated citywide response. While we are experiencing a spike in violence and efforts are underway to improve our coordination and our efforts around violence prevention and intervention, trauma response needs to be a critical component in that strategy. Trauma manifests itself differently in everyone. We see most young boys act out, most young girls shut down. It manifests itself different in the young and the old, in an immigrant or a non-immigrant, in a first responder or a clergy person. So we also have to make sure we're doing psychological first aid for the people who are doing the trauma support work. So I'm renewing my commitment that we have a coordinated trauma-comprehensive response system and a real team under the auspices of our city. Anything that breaks at the bonds of community and erodes the fabric of us is the business of this city council, and trauma is certainly one of those things. It shows up differently, but it reverberates throughout this city and in every neighborhood. So I encourage everyone's participation in the hearing, and I welcome your cosponsorship. Thank you.
Very much, Mr. President, and I'd like to compliment the work of the author. She has dedicated her life, and in particular, her times here at the council around this issue of making our community and our city better. So I definitely want to thank her for her leadership there. We have an issue with violence in the city of Boston. Interestingly, the first couple of weeks of the city of this year have seen actually about the same number of shootings, but sadly, a higher number of fatal shootings. We had around the same number last year, but sadly, the folks who are shooting are on their mark right now. Whether a shooting, and I think we actually used the wrong number, Mr. President, we look at the number of fatalities that actually occur. That actually is a way off the mark number. If someone is shot and they don't die, is their family traumatized? Yes. Is that individual traumatized? Yes. Is anyone connected with them traumatized? Yes. And so we need a lot more resources in this space. And I'm not going to call out any names, but we know that there's people who all of us see at crime sites, who all of us see when a suicide happens, who all of us see when there's a multiple shootings happen. Those folk, if we're really going to deal with this issue, that capacity needs to be broadened. We need more real resources and a department that actually deals with this. If we are going to stem the crime of violence, and Council Presley so aptly puts it, it's hurt people who hurt people. If we don't touch somebody within 72 hours, their friends, their family, the folks who we call a gang, who are usually people who live near them or are connected to them, that's where retribution happens. And it should be a priority of this council, this administration, and everybody in this building to make sure that this stops. And it doesn't matter what neighborhood it's in, Mr. President. Well, we saw, not that long ago, but about a month ago, we saw a shooting that happened right on Boylston Street, right in front of Burger King. So it doesn't matter if we're Roxbury or West Roxbury, these young people who are falling, victim to this, are our young people. And recently, a young person who was in sheet metal, the sheet metal major at Madison Park, was shot and killed. In addition, the young man who was shot and killed in the South End, his child went to Madison Park. So these trauma units also need to reach into the schools. Even though this didn't happen in a school, the trauma still exists in that school. So I, we have to have as a priority for our city that we protect every single person in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Council Flaherty.
This council, this body led efforts years ago, through the efforts of myself, former Council Maureen Feeney, who was our clerk, Council Murphy as Chair of Public Safety, and also Council Yancey. We actually had a trauma response unit in our city, up and running for a few years, and then through budget cuts, guess you could say it went by way of our mounted unit and was dismantled. So I'll offer to the maker to consider including the Inspection Service Department to this hearing, because they were actually charged with running the trauma response unit in the city. They were uniquely situated, and they could coordinate with Boston Police, Boston Public Health Commission, as well as our community health centers and other city agencies. So I would just add a friendly amendment to the, whereas of the order, that they include the Inspection Service Department, because they could add tremendous value to this debate. But like I said, I'd like to have my name added in. Commend the maker.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Council Lamatina.
And I said my name be added, and just to echo Council Flaherty, this is something that was very important to us in 2009, I believe. You know, years ago, my family suffered through trauma, when my cousin was a homicide victim. I remember the pain and trauma that my family and myself went through. And don't want to discuss it now, but I think it's very important that ISD is there and to help families who go through this. So please add my name.
Thank you, Council Lamatina. Add the name of Council O'Malley, Council Wu, Council McCarthy, Council Murphy, Council Baker, Council Seomo, Council Zake. Was that just to add your name, Council Yancey? Would you like to rise and say, Council Yancey?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I really can add to the eloquence that we heard from each of our colleagues who spoke on this. I too would like to commend the maker for refiling it, and to reflect on the fact that we've had nine homicides so far in the calendar year 2014. Nine families lost loved ones. While we must condemn every act of violence, whether it results in a homicide or not, we must also do what we can to comfort the families who have lost those loved ones and who suffered the violence, the non-fatal violence as well. Mr. President, I really can't imagine how a brother or sister of a homicide victim manages to go to school the next day and not be impacted by what has happened to their families. So I think this is altogether appropriate. I think the city of Boston can exercise great leadership and set an example for other cities around this nation that suffers similar loss, if not much worse loss. So I, yes, I'd like to have my name added, but also to ask that we be an even more compassionate city with regards to the fact that we may in fact have hundreds, if not thousands, of our young people and other family members who are like the walking wounded in our city because of all the trauma that has visited them in recent years. So again, I commend the maker, would like to have my name added. Thank you.
Please add Council Yancey's name, and please, would you add the Chair's name? And Council Presley, would you like to say something in closing? Please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank all of you for your support and your eloquent words. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge, you know, when I joined the chamber, you know, I always said my work was, in broad strokes, about breaking cycles of poverty and violence, and I wanted to challenge the discourse to be sure to name all forms of violence. So I want to be very clear in saying that, in the same way the trauma manifests in many ways, as to are there many forms of violence. And there will need to be a customized and specialized approach for all forms of violence. We're talking about supporting victims in the wake of domestic violence, and sexual assault, and families who have been impacted by homicide. And also, you know, unfortunately, as we quickly approach the one-year anniversary of the Marathon bombings, for many people who have been impacted by some sort of trauma, the Marathon was a trauma trigger. For people who fled war-torn countries, those images that they saw, for our veterans, the brave men and women of our armed services, for families impacted by homicide, the Marathon was a huge trauma trigger, not to mention those in this chamber who were at that finish line and who experienced their own trauma. So it's a timely discussion, it's one that impacts the entire city, and I thank all of you for signing on. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Presley. That matter will be placed in the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Community.
Thank you.
Would anybody like to pull something from the green sheets? Pull a matter from the green sheets? Chair recognizes President Linehan.
Yes, I'd like to. Number 0133, from Committee of the Whole, page 1 of 4.
Madam Clerk, please read docket 0133.
In the Committee of the Whole, docket number 0133, sponsored by the mayor, message and order authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to apply for and accept federal FY13 Continuum of Care grant funds of $25 million from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to support programs that provide services and housing to the homeless. It was referred January 15th, I'm sorry.
Chair recognizes President Linehan.
Thank you, Chairman Seomo, I appreciate it. This is somewhat a matter that is truly pressing for the city at this time. As you can tell, the matter reads to apply and accept, not to expend. It's a very large sum of money, but the administration needs to have this matter passed at this time to fill the requirement of a deadline for the application. I think it's important that we pass this at this time. $25 million for our homeless citizens is something that absolutely we cannot afford to lose. So I humbly ask that you support this matter and pass.
The Chair now moves passage of docket number 0133. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Docket number 0133 passes.
I thank you, Council Seomo. At this time, we, did we move on the consent agenda? Did we do the late file consent? No, we did not. Okay. So there's in addition to the consent agenda, there are five late file matters, which in the absence of objection will be added to the consent agenda. Any objection? The matters are so added. The Chair now moves adoption of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. At this time, we will do memorials. Anyone wishing to adjourn in the memory of someone will—I've received your memorials, and I'll read them at this point. Yeah, please, will all of you stand? For Councilor Baker, Julia Jewels Farren. For Councilor Seomo, Doris Ahern and John T. Prince. For Councilor Jackson, Vincent Cumberland of Atlanta, Georgia, Councilor Jackson's brother. For Lorraine Lynette Bowling. For Councilor La Matina, Paul Landry and Mary Scadini. For Councilor McCarthy, Frank Flynn, Edward Knight and Dolores Rabbit. For Councilor O'Malley, Alfitia Pendikas, Georgios Pendikdis, and Elipida Cosmidis. For Council Pressley, William E. Chirchentess. For Council Linehan and Flaherty, Eileen Marisrow and Joseph Mullin. For Council Linehan, Baker and Flaherty, William Willie Cahill. For Councilor O'Malley and Presley, Joseph J. Cabral. And the council as a whole, for Chet Curtis, who served our community so well as a reporter and broadcaster for decades. The chair now moves that we adjourn, and we do so in memory of those aforementioned, and that we'll meet again on Wednesday, February 5, 2014, at noon. This meeting is adjourned. All those in favor, say aye. The council is adjourned. Thank you.